Good evening. This is the call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council Work Session for Monday, April 21st, 2025. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick.
Present.
Ms. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Sche.
Here.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Steger, City Administrator Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, and I don't see Mrs. Jackson, so she would be absent, and Construction's Director, Bill Sims. The first item of business is reports of city staff. Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. So, we still have a little work to do on High Street from last year's improvements downtown. So, we are expecting that now that the weather's definitely turned around. We should be out there. Hopefully, we got a couple manholes to adjust and then get our logo in the center of the Gender Road Phase 6 is continuing. You've probably seen some work here and there the last few weeks. We had a little rain today, but the anticipation at this point is to have the traffic signals wrapped up in the next two weeks. The street lighting is now operational, and they're working this week on staining and sealing the parapet walls to get those finished up. Once that's done, then they can remove the, you've seen some wood framing on the exterior of the walls from the 33 side, they can remove that. The staining and sealing will have to be, some of it still has to be performed from Gender Road, so there will be some closures associated with that, but then the, some of it occurs from 33, so that'll be done at night, as well as the removal of that false work will be done at night. And then currently, they have the painting of the leading edge of the beams below the bridge deck scheduled for early May. So, the goal is to have everything wrapped up by the end of May. Headworks project is underway. The cozing has been out on the site. They've got a lot of their laydown areas done. They have their office, field office, set up. They had begun some utility locating of some of the existing utilities on the site, so we go around, basically verify that everything is where we believe it to be underground. And they have completed the clearing that was necessary for the new facility and sewer lines, so they are starting to get going on that. The paperwork is really underway at this point, so all the material submittals for review and approval are now coming in. The 25 Street Program with Strausser Paving, that's getting ready to start here at the beginning of May. So, they'll begin with the curb replacement work in Westchester, starting May 5th, and that'll take about two weeks, and then move into the sidewalk program in Ashbrook, and that'll start right around May 15th and take about two weeks. Then they've, at the beginning of June, they have some pavement repairs necessary in the streets we're resurfacing and some other miscellaneous areas, so that'll happen at the beginning of June. And they'll also beginning work on the Washington Street-Groveport Road intersection. We're modifying those curbs in the lane configuration a little bit in that area, and also installing sidewalk to the library. That work is slated to start May 30th, and that'll take about two weeks. So, once we have all that done, the milling and resurfacing work will start the middle of June. It takes about a week, basically, to accomplish the milling and resurfacing for this project. And Winchester Boulevard improvements, so we did open bids for that project. Strausser Paving looks to be the successful bidder. I anticipate to bring the legislation for that project to the first meeting in May for authorization to move forward on that. We're currently still in the midst of the right-of-way acquisition process for that work, and we're, hopefully, we should be more than capable of getting started on physical work in June on Winchester Boulevard. You know, at this point, the expectation is, if we start in June, we should be, you know, final complete by October. A couple other items we have underway with design is Green Gate Boulevard, the extension of Green Gate between Diley Road and the existing Green Gate subdivision. Design's wrapping up on that project. The exact timing is really something that will probably be done in conjunction with, you know, where we're at with the development in that area. So, we want to have the road, you know, complete before it's needed. And then also McGill Park Phase 2B. We're currently in design on that project as well, and that's kind of the improvements just north of the portion of the park that we have developed now. Private side, not a whole lot really going on at this point. You know, Ohio Health obviously is continuing, they're moving right along, and the library work as well. Both of those contractors are looking to get back to their site work now that hopefully it's drying up a little bit. Questions?
Mrs. Amos.
Mr. Sims, the, I had another resident approach me about the entrance to 33 with semis not being able to make the turn, and I went out there, and I didn't absorb any semis when I was there, but I did see a lot of damage to the curbs already where they're rubbing. Have we checked, gone back out to check that or to see if there's an issue? Because it seems like we are having a lot of issues, and a lot of residents reporting that the turning radius isn't working.
So, we had noticed that, and we did take a look at it. I mean, at this point, nothing is actually damaged. They've rutted up the backside of the curb where some trailer wheels have gone over. You know, we did discuss with the contractor and the engineering years, the turning radiuses all fit, you know, we're fine with the turning templates. You know, I've sat there and watched the trucks. I have not ever seen one actually drive over the curb. Obviously, they are. You know, it may have been a condition during the winter, you know, with snow piled in the curb lines, you know, we had more cones and barrels out there, you know, but, you know, I'm just watching them, and I'm not seeing an issue. Doesn't mean that people aren't doing that occasionally, you know? So, we thought maybe what we'd do is actually put some concrete behind the curb in there, it's kind of like almost a truck apron. If you've gone into Friendship Kitchen for us off of Trillium, you'll notice they anticipated, because their templates didn't fit the entrance, that trailer wheels would go over the curb, and so they have some kind of, you know, basically looks like a sidewalk, or it's got sidewalk, some paver finish to it, just for those situations, you know? My estimation is there either something there like snow or a barrel that prevents them from making the turn the way they want, or, you know, if your speed's a little high and you get to the point where you really realize it's, this is really more 90 degrees your first go around through there, you know, that they're, they are having to jump over the curb a little bit. So, you know, from the engineering aspect, everything looks fine. The reality shows that somebody's driving over the curb periodically, so we're going to try to address that. We have some more concrete work to do out there, so we'll add that in.
And I will say, this was just reported a couple weeks ago, and I didn't see anything, but I also will tell you that Google still lists our entrance to the freeway as a little further out, so you saying that maybe they're not realizing the turn is, and maybe that's what it is, is they're not, they're expecting the turn that's listed on the map, which it comes quite, it comes earlier.
Very possibly, you know, or maybe someone's not in this area frequently, and last year when they were here for a couple trips, you know, they were able to do that at a much higher speed, and now all of a sudden, it looks different to them when they get up on top of it. So, it's hard to say. I mean, there's, you know, why does anybody drive off the edge of the road, right? But it happens a lot, right? So, you know, so we're thinking we'll beef that up in that area to help protect, you know, fortunately, nothing's damaged yet, but, you know, like to try to protect that some more, particularly the sidewalk ramp, you know, I hate to see that end up cracking.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll try to stop doing it, Jill.
You and that semi, Lori.
Mr. Bennett.
Mr. Sims, when we are talking about the sidewalk installation on Groveport Road as it leads to the library, will the, because we've also talked about like tree infrastructure barrier, natural barriers going up to kind of help with the pedestrian safety through there, will that be installed at the same time, or what's the installation date on any kind of vegetation buffer?
I'm not aware of any vegetation buffer.
Talking about tree line.
The sidewalk is quite a ways off of the roadway.
At some point, maybe some trees.
We were going to remove trees.
That would be the opposite.
I think we're going the wrong way.
Where the, there's some trees down in that low-lying area.
Yeah.
You know, basically on the Canal Villas property, and we're actually removing those as part of our sidewalk or easement agreement with them.
Follow-up later.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Sims? All right, thank you, Mr. Sims.
You're welcome.
Next up would be the request for council action items. The first item is Resolution 25-015. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution indicating what services the City of Canal Winchester will provide to 4.3 acres of land, more or less, for the annexation known as the Zwerer Annexation by Catherine A. Cunningham, Agent for the Petitioners.
Thank you. Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. This is the first step in the annexation process for this 4.38 acres that's currently in Violet Township, Fairfield County. This property is adjacent to the City of Canal Winchester, along Lytopolis Winchester Road. The property owners, which is in a trust, they are, there are two homes on this parcel, and they're looking to sell those homes. The only reason this is a separate parcel is because it crosses the county line, so the home's set in both Franklin County and Fairfield County, and they're on the county line. So, in order to create new parcels to be able to transfer them, they need to annex this parcel into the City of Canal Winchester, and do lots of lists that would allow for those to be split off and sold separately as separate parcels. So, what this resolution does is indicates the services that the City of Canal Winchester will provide to this parcel once it's annexed into the city, so, you know, police service, waste services, you know, all the services we offer the residents of the City of Canal Winchester, and then we forward this back to the Fairfield County Commissioners for their consideration, and ultimately, the commissioners decide whether this parcel should be annexed into the City of Canal Winchester, then it will come back to you in the future to accept the annexation if that step is done with the commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Council, questions? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to move Resolution 25-015 to full council?
So moved.
Motion, thank you. Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Sche.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, Resolution 25-016. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to accept stormwater drainage easement from Shriman Gashi LLC.
Thank you. Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. This resolution is also associated with the Ordinance 25-008. So, 25-008 is an ordinance to accept right-of-way, which will be the future Green Gate Boulevard extension from Diley Road. This drainage easement lies just outside of that road right-of-way, and this will allow us to install a storm sewer that will collect the roadway of drainage from this project and then take it out to Diley Road. And so, this is associated with that roadway infrastructure, but this is an easement that'll be outside of the right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Council questions? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to move Resolution 25-016 to full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Moore. Roll call, please.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Sche.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is Resolution 25-017. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to grant an electric line right-of-way easement to South Central Power Company.
Thank you. Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. This easement is for South Central Power. We approached by South Central Power, who's doing some upgrades to their infrastructure in the Canal Winchester area. They would like to connect two different substations together, so they have substations off of Shaneham Road, and then what they call the TS trim substation would sit just in front of Rudolph, just north of the Madison Township Fire Department. They would like to be able to connect those two substations together to better provide backup power services in the event of any failure of either substation during emergencies. And so, this will allow them to connect those two together by acquiring this easement. It would be a 40-foot easement that would go from Groveport Pike from the right-of-way and the infrastructure they have currently running down Groveport Pike, and would run to the north across the bike trail in the old canal lands, and then behind the fire department to access that substation. We have talked to them about the substation and about the lack of maintenance in front of that substation, so they don't mow the mounding and things that were put in place. Many of you recall years ago, there was a row of evergreen trees across the whole front of that, and South Central cleared that probably in 2018, 2019, and then never planted anything in its place. And so, what we've asked them to do in exchange for this easement is to agree to a planting plan, which is included in your packet there, that will have evergreen hedge row that's installed, that'll be about six feet in height on top of that mound to help shield and screen that area, and then that will all be mulched, and so they won't have the tall grass and things underneath those, and it'll look much more maintained. So, they have agreed to do that in exchange for granted easement, allowing them access across. So, the easement again is 40 feet wide. They will be clearing some trees, many of which are already dead in that area, but there are some, some trees that will need to be cleared as well as part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Council questions? Mr. Sche.
The landscape plan that we're talking about, does that become enforceable in perpetuity, or is it only enforceable this one time when they're trying to get the easement from us?
No, they would, they would maintain that area and add it to their regularly scheduled maintenance.
Okay, I don't see that in any of the documents here.
Right, so we'll, we'll do an agreement with them as part of this, so they've provided a letter basically saying that they'll agree to plant and put three inches of mulch.
I see that, but I just don't see like the commitment to taking care of it in perpetuity. I would like to see that, because so often, it seems like we do things, and 10 years down the road now, there's nothing we can do. I'm going to be here for a long time, so I'd like to keep it nice. Is there anything we can do?
Yeah, I mean, so what we could enforce to our current zoning action, if you want to see them add something to the letter, is that what you're saying?
I just want to make sure they're going to do it, and we're going to, they're going to stick to it, that it's not going to get done, and then five years from now, it's all going to die because nobody watered it, and it looks like what it looked like previously.
So, the resolution that's on the agenda this evening authorizes the mayor to grant that easement, but it does not by its own force grant the easement, so you'd have two questions in front of, or two options to proceed at least. One is whether, moving forward with this resolution, knowing from the discussion here and your questions, Mr. Sche, that the agreement that actually transfers this deed of easement include language for the maintenance in perpetuity, so that in addition to zoning controls and property maintenance controls, we have contractual rights, the city, to go after them versus, and only in the event that they actually fail to live up to their responsibility, or we could do all of that now before the grant easement is authorized by council, however, that's going to delay this further, and we want to, I believe that the objection with the timeline is to be able to get the trees in as soon as possible, so those are sort of the two options you'd have.
If you tell me you're going to put it in the easement agreement, I can live with that.
We'll put it in the easement agreement.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Mrs. Amos.
Ms. Hare, Mr. Hare, my question was just similar. I just wanted to make sure that we give them a timeline, because they don't seem to follow through with the request that we had before, so can we make sure we specify they have to complete this within a certain timeframe?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would imagine the planning would take place in the fall, because Mr. Miller doesn't like anything planted between like now and September.
You could work with him, and I'll take his guidance on tree planting.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to move Resolution 25-017 to full council?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Amos, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Sche.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 25-018. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to authorize the application of motor vehicle permissive tax funds from the Franklin County Engineer for the rehabilitation of Washington Street.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Ms. Amick. The Franklin County Engineer holds funds, these permissive funds, as part of your license renewal on an annual basis. It's, I believe this one's a $5 fee that's on there. They hold it on, in our behalf. We have used this program a couple times before in the past, once for Washington Street back in 2011, and then the last time for Gender Road Phase 4, which is the Groveport Road intersection improvements as part of that. So, we are looking to request $100,000 of that, of those funds, or 2024, they collected $35,000 on our behalf, and we have a total of $300,000 in that account. That is something we do like to build that, those funds up, to be able to use them in circumstances such as this. As we went through the 2025 Street Program, when we designed for Washington Street, we were coming up on a little bit of a budget crunch, and we, we stopped the, the work at the Columbus Street intersection, didn't finish going from Columbus Street to Waterloo. These funds will finish that out.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Council questions? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to move Resolution 25-018 to full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McLaughlin, second by Mr. Sche. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Sche.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 25-019. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution in support of State Issue 2 renewal of the State Capital Improvement Program on the May 6, 2025 statewide ballot.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Ms. Amick. As the resolution says, the renewal of State Issue 2, or what we know of as OPWC funding, Ohio Public Works Commission, is up for renewal on the May 6 ballot. This is just a resolution in support of that. Attached with the resolution is the city's history of our funding through that. It is rather significant with over $41 million in total project costs, with 26, 26 million seven, 700,000 of total OPWC funds and, and over 19 million of that in grants. Again, very successful. We put together some very competitive applications strategically with the, with the funding requests that we have with grant and loan, and are pretty proud of the record that, that we have in, in this program. It has been great. This doesn't cost any, any taxpayer funds. These are all bonds. The revolving loan fund that goes along with it is a, typically, they're very low-interest loans, sometimes in some cases, I think the roadways are no-interest loans, and the utilities are, are low-interest. I think we had a 2.5% at, at our last one in 2012 for the, for the utilities on that.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Council discussion? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to move Resolution 25-019 to full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Sche. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Sche.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 25-020. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution authorizing the mayor, city administrator, and finance director to seek financial assistance for fiscal year 2026 community project funding through Representative Mike Carey's congressional office.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples.
This resolution was added to the agenda as part of the, the amendments to the, to the agenda, so appreciate you accommodating the request. We started working on this on, late on Thursday afternoon, with us being off on Good Friday, we weren't able to get into the packet, so again, we appreciate you accommodating. We are looking to, to apply for some funding. Deadline is Friday at 6 o'clock, so we were on a little bit of a time crunch on this anyway. We went, we're going back and forth between a couple of projects on this, McGill Park and the headworks. Last year, we, we applied for some headworks, or I'm sorry, for the funding for McGill Park, and we're not successful with that. Looking at the, the headworks project, there's a portion of this funding program that we received funding for in, for the water treatment plant back in 2007, that we're going to try to utilize. It's for equipment rather than the project yourself, the, looking for a, the possibility of adding a process equipment. Still trying to finalize that, but one, one piece of that is about 900,000, and there's some pumps and some other equipment that goes along with that, that we're looking to probably be in the, around the $2 million mark. Again, we're still trying to finalize the application process as part of this. This would just be the authorizing legislation for that, for that application.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Council discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to move Resolution 25-020 to full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Sche.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to Ordinance 25-007. This ordinance is currently in a tabled status. According to the minutes from the last meeting, this was pending a conversation between Mr. Peoples and the Communication and Events Team. Is there a motion to untable this?
Actually, there's a motion to postpone it until September, or we can just remove it from the agenda, whichever the body prefers, and then we're going to add it back to old new business to come up first meeting in September, please.
Okay, so, do we need to untable this first, Mr. Boggs, before we can make the withdrawal?
If it's not removed from the table, it will, it will die of its own accord.
Okay.
So, I suppose it just depends on what council's will is. If you remove it from the table and then move to postpone it to the particular date, then we would just need to make note of that, and it would automatically reappear on the agenda at that particular date.
Okay, that's what I would prefer to do. So, is, is there a motion to untable Ordinance 25-007 at this time?
Madam Chairman, City Administrator Peoples got something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As per the, the discussion at the, at the last meeting, we're still trying to see if we can do it administratively, so a, having the ordinance there may end up being moved as well, and so I don't know if that adds, adds that. Mr. Sche and I talked last week, we were, the communication- We were, the Communications Team, Events Team was already going through a devaluation of our, of our rental policies. So we added this into that, into that discussion.
Right. So we have the option to leave it tabled and let it die on the vine, or you can withdraw your request, Mr. Shea.
Let's just let it die. And we're going to add it to old new business for the first meeting and September. And it's coming back.
Okay. Thank you. So the clerk, if you will add this to our old and new business list to come back in September, Ordinance 25-007 will remain tabled. Moving on to Ordinance 25-00A. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to accept the dedication of real property Shriming Gashi LLC for use as public right of way.
Thank you. Mr. Herr?
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. As I mentioned earlier, this would allow the city to accept the 1.252 acres of property as public right of way for the future Green Gate Boulevard extension. We are working with this developer on a surrounding development. We've entered into a TIF agreement that requires the city to build the roadway by this year. And so our intent is to get that constructed this year. And this is the, kind of the first step in accepting the right of way so that we can do the work this way.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Council discussion? Okay. Hearing none. The chair will make the motion to move Ordinance 25-008 to full council.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Amick, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to Ordinance 25-009. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement for building department services with Architecture Ohio Incorporated for the provision of chief building official and master plans examiner services.
Thank you. Mr. Herr?
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. This is an ordinance that would extend our contract with our chief building official and master plans examiner for the building department. This is Architecture Ohio, who is Mike Mariga. He has been our, our chief building official and plans examiner for six years. We would like to continue that relationship with him. The only changes in the contract are increases in the fees. So there's about a 25% increase in the fees associated with this contract. Mr. Mariga also provides these services to Violet Township and it's the same rates that he's charging in Violet Township. So they are competitive rates where the market is.
Okay. Thank you. Council discussion?
Mr. Herr, is this, is this the company that we have where there's only one person that's doing all these reviews?
There's one person that's a master plans examiner, yes. We have multiple inspectors, but one person. And this is also the company that does our inspection services.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Under a separate contract.
Is this, I know I've heard from several residents that when things come in, if there's, sometimes there's a large time delay. Is that because he's the only one?
Yes. He's doing both commercial and residential now. So previously, we had another company doing our residential services, was a residential building official. So that's under a separate contract. This is for commercial.
And our contract doesn't state that he has to turn things around within a certain amount of time?
No.
Okay. So it just seems like it's a service to the residents sometimes when they are waiting long periods of time just to be able to be seen by one. And if I understand correctly, if there is an error, they go to the bottom of the pile and have to work their way back up again.
Correct. So it requires you to resubmit plans and then you, basically they're reviewed in the order they come in. And so unfortunately, there's a shortage of qualified people that do this type of work and it's becoming more acute. And so there are very few people that provide these contract services to essentially all communities in Central Ohio.
Would it be in our best interest to look at a secondary?
For the residential portions.
For the residential portion?
It could be, yes. We're, we're working on trying to speed that up, so.
I would appreciate that because I feel like a lot of our residents feel like it's the city that's delaying things. And really, there's, there's not that understanding of that there is one person, but if we could, I would really appreciate additional conversations on that.
Yes. When it's, when there are correction orders, it becomes a very long process.
Thank you. I look forward to those conversations.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Shea?
What did we spend with these folks last year?
In a typical year, we spend about, well, on this contract or on both contracts. Because last year, we only had them for half a year under contract for residential. But on this contract, it's approximately $60,000 a year.
Okay, that's not bad. It's kind of ironic though, the government outsources something and it gets slower. I mean, is there any kind of shared resource maybe we could find with another municipality that would have somebody like that on staff that we could contract with that municipality?
There are very few municipalities in Central Ohio that, that have this resource on staff, almost all of them contract out and they're all contracting essentially with three entities.
The only reason I say that is like, didn't we use Columbus to do the construction management on the Gender Road, constructed phase?
Columbus's timelines are longer than ours.
Okay. We're just looking for different solutions. At what point do we get to the point where we bring something like this in-house?
I don't anticipate a point in time where we would bring this service in-house.
Okay.
And I will say that I personally went through this service and it wasn't bad. I mean, I was given a timeframe when, when the plans were submitted and it came back within that timeframe. So I mean, the expectation was set properly. It took a few weeks, but if you're getting designs drawn, it takes a few weeks. You gotta expect it's going to take a few weeks to get them approved, too. I mean, at least that was my feeling with the whole, my personal experience.
You are just so reasonable.
Just kind of to follow on to this, a thought just occurred. If that particular CBO goes out on paternity leave or becomes ill and is off duty for a while, how do they manage the backup or does it just delay the?
We do, we do have provisions for backup services.
Okay.
So we have used those in the past.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you. Anything else from council? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to move Ordinance 25-009 to full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to old and new business. There's nothing on the current old business list. Is there any new business for this evening's meeting? Mr. Bennett?
Mrs. Amick, yes. Thank you. I did share an update to council via email on some work that a group of volunteer citizens have been doing on helping to sort of jumpstart a sustainability commission. I know that was something that we'd talked about coming out of the community plan that was going to be community-led. And Mrs. Amick and I, or Mrs. Amos and I had a, had another meeting over the weekend with a group and, you know, through that collaborative effort, we've sort of arrived at this rough draft and wanted to present it to the, to the body, to the city this evening just for input, thoughts, changes, submissions. Our hope is that, I mean, we've got a really anxious group of people who want to start doing stuff like right now. So they've already set us a potential next meeting date for May 10th. So they are hoping that we can formalize this committee by the, our next meeting, the first meeting in May. Their expectation would be is that it would sort of be the similar process to planning and zoning or landmarks or any other committee within the city that the appointments would run to the mayor's office. Most of the people who have already volunteered to help with this pre-work have already volunteered, initiated that, or.
Expressed interest.
Expressed interest, thank you, in, in filling one of the, you know, different tiers of seats that we've sort of outlined as a part of that process as well. So with that, I would turn it over to the rest of the body for discussion.
King from council? There is a lot of excitement I'm hearing from people who are, had expressed interest how excited they are about this, so.
Very excited because of polling concerns. More.
I think it's interesting, too, when you sit in there with all of them and each one comes with just little perspectives. So we gave them a spreadsheet over, between the meetings and asked them to, to list things that they wanted to do. And the list we got back was large, which is great. I mean, there's a lot of interest in doing a lot of things in our community, so that was awesome. We just, in the little information piece that you got, we kind of narrowed down the ones that kept seeing over and over again.
Many of the members who had expressed interest, they bring a unique gift to the table. Many of them are, not many, but some of them are master gardeners. Some of them have experience in training and education and certain kinds of sustainability kinds of, of business and it's, they're really excited, so at least the ones I've talked to. Anything else?
I think it's put together really well. It laid it out nice and simple and. Let's get it going.
Okay. Good deal.
Okay.
City?
Mr. Boggs, I don't know if there's any formal legal action that needs to be taken. I think, is there an ordinance or a resolution that's required for the establishment of this group? That's why I see CCG on that, by the way.
Yeah, I'm thinking about that since it would be a committee that would include people outside of council. I think that it would be best set up maybe as a resolution that would incorporate like the mission statement and composition, those sorts of things that you included in the draft that you prepared. That way, we have a record of it and it can go through in a single reading and be easily revised as necessary. But a resolution would at least create a record and some authority from council as to what the committee's mandate is.
Excellent. Is that something you can have teed up for next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Great. We'll look forward to seeing that.
My only hesitation was I'm just flabbergasted that our next meeting is the first meeting of May. But yeah.
Yes.
Two weeks.
Thank you both. And Mrs. Amos and Mr. Bennett, thank you for kind of leading that effort.
Mr. Peoples, did you have any input on that member of staff that we were looking to ask for additional support from?
I'm not familiar with that. Sorry. Did I say something?
We thought you were snoring.
We'll make up members.
All right. He's good. All right. Perfect.
No input. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll point Mr. Peoples.
Okay. Any other new?
I like all the twitching.
You were voluntold. Anything else for new business?
This is the only thing I have. Thank you.
You can let him off the hook that it really isn't him?
No.
Oh, okay.
Hearing no other new business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mrs. Amos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Timeout, 6:42. Council will begin promptly at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Busker, now we're in.
all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Miss Amick? Yes. Present. Miss Amos?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Miss Amos? Yes.
Thank you.
Timeout, 6:42. Council will begin promptly at 7:00 P.M.
Good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council meeting for April 21st, 2025. This evening, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Amick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Miss Amick? Yes. Present. Miss Amos?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Thank you. This evening, we have approval of three minutes. We have minutes 25-00, or 011, my apologies. This is the April 7th, 2025 work session meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion or adjustments? Okay. Hearing none? Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Miss Amick? Yes. Miss Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Thank you. This evening, we have approval of three minutes. We have minutes 25-00, or 011, my apologies. This is the April 7th, 2025 work session meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion or adjustments? Okay. Hearing none? Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Miss Amick? Yes. Miss Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. We have minutes 25- what happened? -012. This is the April 7th, 2025 public hearing minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Bennett. Roll call.
Miss Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. We have minutes 25- what happened? -012. This is the April 7th, 2025 public hearing minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Bennett. Roll call.
Miss Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Miss Amick? Yes.
Thank you. Finally, for the minutes, we have minutes 25-013. This is the April 7th, 2025 full city council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amick, second by Mr. Busker. Any discussion? Roll call.
Miss Amick? Yes. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Miss Amick? Yes.
Thank you. Finally, for the minutes, we have minutes 25-013. This is the April 7th, 2025 full city council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amick, second by Mr. Busker. Any discussion? Roll call.
Miss Amick? Yes. Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Miss Amis? Yes. Mr. Ben?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to communications and petitions. First is a planning and zoning recommendation and a request to set a public hearing date for June 2nd, 2025. Any time preference for council?
How long you think that was going to be?
This is a preliminary development plan for Green Gate Plaza, which includes four Alf Parcels and a new Kroger store. So just, it'll be probably 15 minutes of staff presentation, going over the allocation, and then whatever public comments or fire anything, but we didn't have any public comments of planning and zoning permission.
5:30 enough for you all?
5:30.
Is that too late or too early?
Okay.
Grocery stores aren't as controversial.
Ms. Pierce, I hear 5:30 from the body of council. Any objections from council?
No.
Okay. We'll walk in for June 2nd, public hearing at 5:30. Thank you, Mr. Herr. Also in your package this evening is Madison Township fire statistics for March 2025. We also have the pleasure of having Chief Robinson with us this evening.
Man, didn't recognize you. It's me. Good evening, members of council and staff. Pleasure to be here representing Madison Township this evening. Couple of things I'd like to report on. First and foremost, we've officially placed our newest apparatus in service. That's a 75-foot aerial ladder device that you may or may not have seen around town or on social media. This is the first of its type in the township for us. We've kind of combined what we would normally call a fire engine or a pumper truck that shows up to the scene with the hoses and the water and can go and fight the fire, as well as a ladder truck that you might see show up that allows us to have some aerial waterway and a defensive fire, but also to be able to reach the higher, you know, service areas, the hotels that we have here in Canal, or the houses that have the longer setback. So a new concept we're trying, seems to be working out really well so far. That truck is stationed at our 181 station there off of Hamilton Road, more towards our warehouse district, but yet still allows us to make access over here in a good amount of time. So very happy to have that in service, and you'll definitely see that around town more and more, especially at community events. Also, I'd like to thank the city for inviting us to participate in the recent Easter egg hunt. We always enjoy getting out with the community, having that opportunity to meet with the residents, let the kids climb all over the fire trucks, try on the gear and all that good stuff, and kind of tell our story. So greatly appreciate that, look forward to all the events that we have planned coming up with you all this summer season as well. And then finally, Administrator Brooks asked me to pass along that we are currently still working with our third-party aggregate company to get the best rates for gas and electric as they come available. Right now, the market is, as you know, volatile, going up and down. We are locked in at the lowest rate that they have found at this point. The current contract that we are under goes until May of 2026, but we have the opportunity that if rates dip, we can jump on it and lock into it, so we're constantly looking at that. But just wanted to make you aware of that, that we are still looking for that opportunity. It just hasn't presented itself at this time, and we are at least locked in with the current rates until May of 2026. So that's all I have this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions if council or administration or staff has any.
All right. Hearing none? Thank you very much for the opportunity. We always appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to be here, sir.
Okay. That concludes communications and petitions.
Mr. Bennett?
Nope.
Apparently not. There was a letter that came in today from Green Oaks Development. It's up on, a couple miles up agenda road. It's just an opportunity to submit comments for that project.
Is this just a, is this a courtesy? Okay.
They talk about a radius, although they say it's a one-mile radius. That's why I sent it. I looked at it. It's actually two miles up the road, but I think it's the funding that they're using. It opens them up for some public comment.
Okay.
So that'll be in the packet.
Green Oaks of Canal Winchester LLC, located in Chicago.
Okay. And just, I guess just for clarity, in case anybody out there is wondering, since we're kind of talking about it, and I don't know if anybody else has seen the letter, it's for an assisted living facility up closer to the gender and refugee road Kroger. So not in Canal Winchester, but close enough to send us a letter to know that it's happening, so, or potentially happening. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Moore. Appreciate it.
What's that? L.I. H.T.C.
Any other communications or petitions this evening?
Tax credit. Low income taxes.
Okay. We will move to public comment this evening. So public comment is limited to three minutes. Your individual time will not begin until you begin speaking. We do ask that you add your name to the sign-in sheet. That is all. And then, you know.
Let them read?
I think that's it. Anyway, anyone wish to engage in public comment this evening?
I'm Brad Wilson. Motion to get a new pen? Just kidding.
Great, Mr. Wilson.
Got it. Now, just had a little script on, just working. Okay. I'd like to talk again just about the potential development here at Hayes.
Good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council meeting for April 21st, 2025. This evening, the Pledge of Legions will be led by Ms. Amick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes, President.
Ms. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Thank you. This evening, we have approval of three minutes. We have minutes 25-011, my apologies. This is the April 7th, 2025 work session meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion or adjustments? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. We have minutes 25-012. This is the April 7th, 2025 public hearing minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Bennett. Roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, for the minutes, we have minutes 25-013. This is the April 7th, 2025 full city council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amick, second by Mr. Buskirk. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move to communications and petitions. First is a planning and zoning recommendation and a request to set a public hearing date for June 2nd, 2025. Any time preference for council?
How long do you think that was going to be?
This is an preliminary development plan for Green Gate Plaza, which includes four Alf Parcels and a new Kroger store. So just, it'll be probably 15 minutes of staff presentation, going over the allocation, and then whatever public comments are...
Fire anything, but we didn't have any public comments of planning and zoning permission. 5:30 enough for you all?
5:30.
Is that too late or too early?
Okay.
Grocery stores aren't as controversial.
Ms. Pierce, I hear 5:30 from the body of council. Any objections from council?
No.
Okay. We'll walk in for June 2nd, public hearing at 5:30. Thank you, Mr. Herr. Also in your package this evening is Madison Township fire statistics from March 2025. We also have the pleasure of having Chief Robinson with us this evening.
Man, didn't recognize you. It's me. Good evening, members of council and staff. Pleasure to be here representing Madison Township this evening. Couple of things I'd like to report on. First and foremost, we've officially placed our newest apparatus in service. That's a 75-foot aerial ladder device that you may or may not have seen around town or on social media. This is the first of its type in the township for us. We've kind of combined what we would normally call a fire engine or a pumper truck that shows up to the scene with the hoses and the water and can go and fight the fire, as well as a ladder truck that you might see show up that allows us to have some aerial waterway in a defensive fire, but also to be able to reach the higher, you know, service areas, the hotels that we have here in Canal, or the houses that have the longer setback. So a new concept we're trying, seems to be working out really well so far. That truck is stationed at our 181 station there off of Hamilton Road, more towards our warehouse district, but yet still allows us to make access over here in a good amount of time. So very happy to have that in service, and you'll definitely see that around town more and more, especially at community events. Also, I'd like to thank the city for inviting us to participate in the recent Easter egg hunt. We always enjoy getting out with the community, having that opportunity to meet with the residents, let the kids climb all over the fire trucks, try on the gear and all that good stuff, and kind of tell our story. So greatly appreciate that, look forward to all the events that we have planned coming up with you all this summer season as well. And then finally, Administrator Brooks asked me to pass along that we are currently still working with our third-party aggregate company to get the best rates for gas and electric as they come available. Right now, the market is, as you know, volatile, going up and down. We are locked in at the lowest rate that they have found at this point. The current contract that we are under goes until May of 2026, but we have the opportunity that if rates dip, we can jump on it and lock into it. So we're constantly looking at that, but just wanted to make you aware of that, that we are still looking for that opportunity. It just hasn't presented itself at this time, and we are at least locked in with the current rates until May of 2026. So that's all I have this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions if council or administration or staff has any. All right. Hearing none.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
We always appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to be here, sir.
Okay. That concludes communications and petitions.
Mr. Bennett?
Nope. Apparently not.
There was a letter that came in today from Green Oaks Development. It's up on, a couple miles up, agenda road. It's just an opportunity to submit comments for that project.
Is this just a, is this a courtesy? Okay.
They talk about a radius, although they say it's a one-mile radius. That's why the Senate, I looked at it, it's actually two miles up the road, but I think it's the funding that they're using. It opens them up for some public comment.
Okay.
So that'll be in the packet.
Green Oaks of Canal Winchester LLC, located in Chicago. Okay. And just, I guess just for clarity, in case anybody out there's wondering, since we're kind of talking about it, and I don't know if anybody else has seen the letter, it's for an assisted living facility up closer to the Gender and Refugee Road Kroger. So not in Canal Winchester, but close enough to send us a letter to know that it's happening, so, or potentially happening. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Moore. Appreciate it.
What's a LIHTC?
Any other communications or petitions this evening?
Tax credit. Low income taxes.
Okay.
House and tax credit.
We will move to public comment this evening. So public comment is limited to three minutes. Your individual time will not begin until you begin speaking. We do ask that you add your name to the sign-in sheet. That is all. And then, you know.
Let them read?
I think that's it. Anyway, anyone wish to engage in public comment this evening?
I'm Brad Wilson. Motion to get a new pen? Just kidding.
Great, Mr. Wilson.
Got it. Now, just had a little script on, just working. Okay. I'd like to talk again just about the potential development here at Hayes Road and Lythopolis Road, and I've thought about this through the week, well, last couple of weeks. Honestly, lost some sleep over it. And I guess the question that I have is, who was the city council elected to represent? Like, why are you even here? Why bother with a city council? Why would citizens want to put together a city council? And the reason is because we live in a republic, and so we elect people to preserve and look after our rights, because we don't have time to do everything. And so I'm wondering now, if they knew, what's the benefit to the citizenry? That's what I'm trying to figure out here. I kind of made a pros and cons list here, like I do pretty regular with big decisions. And the things I have on the pros side is that there will be more tax dollars coming in. I think that's equaled out on the cons side, because there's costs associated with those. The potential for more citizens, which I don't know if that's good or not, but then the cons seem to take over, and I'm speaking from the perspective of current citizens now. There will be more traffic. We know that. So it's going to slow us down and make us less productive in our lives, potentially more dangerous, certainly more dangerous if we're honest about it. A potential for more crime, I can't say there will be, but obviously with more people, more crime. We're going to have more students in our schools, and so we're going to have to continue to grow that, support that. There will be less agriculture. I talked last time that I was here about the culture of our community and being tied to our agricultural roots, and we're literally building that away. And, you know, if you could take a time machine back 50 years and look at Reynoldsburg and Whitehall or other things just closer to the city, you'd find communities that were similar to ours with a tie to agriculture, and it's since been developed away, and now you wouldn't find that at all. And I wonder now, if you took that time machine forward 50 years, does Canal Winchester look like you want it to look? Is it still the cute, quaint town with smaller roads and less traffic and, you know, antique tractors at our events and the things that make Canal Winchester fun and a lovable place to live? I think decisions like this are chipping away at that future. The next one that's kind of a big thing to me, living just close to this, is the peace of mind that I have, and that's continually eroded with development, but, you know, we have equipment out, we have animals, we have barns, we have, of course, our homes and children and all that stuff. And you're just a little less safe with all that and a little less pieces there. You know that there's a potential for someone who might need something or want something that you have to just come and take it. And so then it's like, okay, well, I have to have more security, I have to have more cameras, I have to have this, or listen more for that dog. Is he barking at, you know, a turtle in the yard, or is he barking at someone who's out there getting into something they shouldn't? And then another one I thought of as a con is the rising price of land. I know these guys are in business to make money, and I don't resent that. I'm in business to make money too, but I cannot compete with these guys when it comes to farming land. I cannot pay what they pay when they're going to develop it when I'm just going to farm it. And so what it does is it just prices me out of the market. I would love to buy all that and make it farm land for the next five generations. It's not practical at these prices. And when we continue to allow development, it just incentivizes that for the next piece of land, and the next piece of land, and the next piece of land. And so I guess my closing remarks are, why are you, what's the benefit here to the citizens that are already here? I know new people could move in and be very grateful for these homes, but are you benefiting the people that already live here? And if so, how? It just doesn't make sense to me, and I think, I think that you'll be held accountable if their lives change. We've already seen speed limits dropping to kind of unreasonably low limits, in my opinions, and costing me more time and money as I'm trying to get places. Anyway, I just hope you're doing the best for the people that elected you to preserve their rights. Thank you.
In regards to the Miller Farms' potential development, to the Wilcox team, I'd like to apologize to you on behalf of the residents of this city. I believe you're trustworthy actors, and I do like your plan, just not on this parcel of land. City staff gave you tons of feedback, which caused you to pump a lot of money into this project to do way more updates than should have been necessary. From the get-go, they should have informed you that this parcel was designated by the new community plan to be single-family homes, and your planned development was a non-starter. No matter if this rezoning and plan in front of council today is approved or not, the process you have had to go through was not fair to you. To members of city council, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I stand here not just as an individual, but as a voice echoing the hopes, concerns, and dreams of the people you represent, the citizens of this community who entrusted you with their vote. I remember when agenda road was two lanes, and the only businesses by 33 were a Soho Gas Station and Bob McDorman, and the only traffic jam was caused by a tractor. A distant memory of a bygone era. The south sector of the city is all we have left to maintain our rural roots, and this development sells out the south side of town the same way agenda road was. Your role as council members is a sacred one. When the people elected you, they did not, they didn't choose you to impose their own will or to serve as proxies for city officials. They chose you to listen, to understand, and act as their advocates. This chamber isn't a place for personal agendas or top-down directives. It's a bridge between the people and the decisions that shape their lives. When you vote, you hold their trust in your hands. I know this issue before you today stirs strong opinions. You've heard from experts, from staff, and perhaps from your own consciences. I urge you to pause and ask, what do the people who live here, who pay taxes, who raise families here, what do they want? They're not just members on a spreadsheet or voices in a survey. They're the heartbeat of this city. Their will isn't a suggestion, it's the foundation of your authority. Voting against their wishes risks more than a single decision. It erodes faith in the process. It tells them their voices don't matter, that their choice in you was misplaced, but voting with them, that builds trust. It shows you're not here to rule, but to represent. It proves this system works, not for the few in this room, but for the many beyond these walls. I get it, sometimes the loudest voices aren't the majority, but I don't believe that to be so in this case. Sometimes pressure from above feels overwhelming, but you have the tools to discern the people's will, the calls, the emails, the meetings. The turnout at hearings like this, use them. Let them guide you, be the leaders who say, "We heard you and we acted for you." This vote isn't just about policy, it's about principle. It's about honoring the promise you made when you took this office. I implore you, set aside your own will, resist the sway of officials, and let the people's voice prevail. That's not weakness, it's strength. That's not politics, it's democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce. Anyone else this evening? If there's no one else that would like to speak, we'll move on to reports of city officials and staff. First report would be mayor's report. Mayor Steer.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I would like to report that the Charter Commission, the Review Commission, is wrapping up their business soon. I think that they're on the last leg of their analysis, and so another meeting or two, and I think they'll be presenting something to you. So that business is about finished. I was not able to be there Wednesday night, but I think that things are coming to a close pretty soon. So wanted to report to you on that. Also, Mayor Ginther had a state of the city last Wednesday night where he reported a lot about affordable housing and new growth in the city, and he's going to be putting forth a bond package of a half a billion dollars for this purpose, of which a lot of money is going to be going towards infrastructure. So we are going to be petitioning for that. We're setting up meetings now to petition for them to spend some money and some energy just north of here with all the growth that they're putting in. I know that's what they're looking at, and we're just going to try to be the squeaky wheel down here and try to get some of that attention back to this part of the city. So I wanted to report to you on that. Other than that, if you have any questions for me, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you. We'll move to city administrator, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. The only thing I want to add to my written report is that we started hydrant flushing today. With that comes a little bit of disruption in the water system. Just flush your lines out if need be.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Mr. Peoples?
Just wanted to say thank you. I saw the first of the 10 flock cameras were installed.
They were.
So moving in the right direction. I know we got a couple more weeks to get the rest of them up, but excited to see the impact and the help that'll provide everybody in law enforcement with those.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We'll move to Fairfield County Sheriff's report. Sergeant Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Good evening, council. I do not have anything to report. However, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
We like quiet.
It's, yes.
Okay. We're not going to... Law Director, Mr. Boggs. I'm just kidding. Anybody else on council have questions for Sergeant Strong? No? Okay. Mr. Boggs.
Nothing to report this evening, no requests for executive session either, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
I don't know if there's anything to add from Ms. Jackson, but finance director?
Done today.
No? Okay. Thank you. Development Director, Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We are intending to close on 8 Washington Street tomorrow, so we will purchase that property tomorrow, and then we'll be seeking bids to demolish the simple home that's there over the coming weeks. OHM and ZoneCo, our consultants for the zoning code rewrite, have finished their diagnostic report on our existing code. They'll be presenting that to the zoning code steering committee at their next meeting on April 30th, so just to keep you up to date on what's happening there. And then also wanted to maybe get some feedback again on recreational marijuana. And so our moratorium is expiring at the end of June, and I've shared some maps previously with you, both the state's boundaries from certain uses in the community, the 500-foot boundaries that it can't be within 500 feet of, and then an additional map that if we were to put an additional 500 feet on all residential properties. So didn't know what council's desire was there, if our intent would be to extend a moratorium, whether we are looking at writing an ordinance to place restrictions on the location. We are getting a significant amount of interest in locating a recreational marijuana facility in Canal Winchester. It's not, the state is not currently permitting additional retail locations in Franklin County, and so many people want to be as close to Franklin County as possible due to the population size, but there aren't any to be there, so Canal Winchester makes a good location for them to do that, because they can be on the Fairfield County side.
When there's some, looking at your map, there's some big areas over there in that Fairfield County side where they could slide in if that's what we decide to do.
I mean, it's all based on the regulations that we adopt. That's just showing the 500 feet, but you could place it in certain zoning districts, which would then whittle that down further. You can make it a conditional use, which would put it in the hands of planning and zoning, where it's only if it meets certain conditions or if it's appropriate for that location, so there's other things that we can do, but just wanted to have that on everyone's radar again, that that deadline is coming up quickly.
To ask a question, you may not know the answer to this, but I know that money's been set aside from those places that do operate in those municipalities, and I think the state's still holding on to it. Have they released any of that money to the, to those municipalities, or is it still being sat on?
It's my understanding that none of the state's funds have been distributed to local communities. So currently, they collect 36% for the local host communities, but none of that money has been distributed. Now, they are going through the state budget process currently, and there have been varying proposals by both the governor's office and the Ohio House on reallocating those dollars or changing the amount that's collected. And there's not agreement between the governor's proposed budget and the House budget has passed. The Senate has not passed a budget, and I imagine it'll be different from what the House passed. And so we don't know where that's going to land yet.
Kind of figured, but...
Is the 36%, is it just of the tax revenue, or is it of the gross sales?
The marijuana is a 10%. Yeah, it's 10% tax, and that 36% is of that.
So every hundred dollars, the municipality get $3.60?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
It's a lot of money if you actually got it.
If you get it.
If you get it, yeah. So I said, if you actually get it.
And if the legislature doesn't change it, you know, they might have to help Larry Householder with some legal fees or something.
Do we, as council, feel like we're more apt to probably extend the moratorium before we come to any conclusions? Should we just go ahead and extend our moratorium to the end of 2025?
I would be in favor of that.
I am too, especially since the money factor's on the...
Yeah.
I would be agree. Other end of the table?
Yeah.
Yes.
The quiet end.
Yeah. There was a lot of head nodding. I could see.
There was a wild hood, man.
Mr. Boggs, does that provide clarity and direction?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Then extension of that for that combination.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Herr? Technically, it was Mr. Herr.
Mr. Herr, do we have an estimate yet on the asbestos abatement for 8?
Washington.
Washington?
We do. It was very, it was very reasonable.
Okay.
I don't recall the exact cost. It was in the range of a thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
It's only in the window blazing, and only on the windows that haven't been replaced. So half the windows are new vinyl windows, and so it's just a few windows that have the window blazing.
Good to know. Thank you.
Anything else from Mr. Herr? Okay. We'll move to resolutions. We have first resolution this evening is Resolution 25-015. Clerk, could you read that ordinance?
A resolution indicating what services the city of Canal Winchester will provide to 4.38 acres of land, more or less for the annexation known as the Zoyer Annexation by Catherine A. Cunningham, agent for the petitioners.
Thank you. The sponsor of that is Mr. Moore.
Motion to adopt Resolution 25-015.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Sorry. Resolution 25-016. Clerk, could you read this resolution?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to accept stormwater drainage easement from Shriming Gashi LLC.
Thank you. The sponsor is Mr. Buskirk.
I move to adopt Resolution 25-016.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution is Resolution 25-017. Clerk, could you read that resolution?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to grant an electric line right-of-way easement to South Central Power Company.
Thank you. The sponsor on that is Ms. Amis.
Motion to adopt Resolution 25-017.
Thank you. Chair will second. So motion made by Ms. Amis, second by Mr. Bennett. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Boggs, we are gonna, you're right in that easement, and you're gonna put that in there, correct?
Correct. It will either be in the grant of easement itself or in an agreement associated with that grant of easement.
Alright, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution is Resolution 25-018. Ms. Pierce, could you read that resolution?
A resolution to authorize the application of motor vehicle permissive tax funds from the Franklin County engineer for the rehabilitation of Washington Street.
Thank you. The sponsor for that is Mr. McLaughlin.
A motion to adopt Resolution 25, or I'm sorry, 25-018.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. McLaughlin, second by Ms. Amick. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next resolution is Resolution 25-019. Clerk, could you read that resolution?
A resolution in support of state issue two renewal of the state capital improvement program on the May 6, 2025 statewide ballot.
Thank you. The sponsor is Mr. Moore.
Motion to adopt Resolution 25-019.
Dose.
We have a motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution 25-020. Clerk, could you read this ordinance as well?
A resolution authorizing the mayor, city administrator, and finance director to seek financial assistance for fiscal year 2026 community project funding through Representative Mike Carey's congressional office.
Thank you. The sponsor, sorry, the sponsor is Mr. Moore. Mr. Buskirk?
I move to adopt Resolution 25-020.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Ms. Amick. Any discussion?
Do have a quick question, just resonant ask. Why do we even need a resolution for this?
It's part of the public process.
Okay.
They give, give some credit for talking about it in a public forum.
Got it.
Do we get bonus points when we go for loans then?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We get bonus points later on when we come in for loans because we help, you know, run the machine here? Okay.
Bonus points, that's the thought.
Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Why not? Yes.
That will bring us to ordinances. The first ordinance on our agenda this evening is Ordinance 24-034. Clerk, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Part 11 of the codified ordinances in the zoning map of the city of Canal Winchester, rezoning approximately 95.71 acres of land from exceptional use and planned residential district to planned unit development owned by the Dwight A. Emmler Regivable Living Trust and Kenneth Cole LLC located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Hayes Road and Leipopolis Road and consisting of six parcels. PID 184-002994, 184-002998, 184-002999, 184-003000, 184-003001, and 184-003245. And to adopt a preliminary development plan and development text for a proposed 95.71 acre planned unit development Miller Farms.
Thank you. The chair is going to motion to amend the ordinance to the amended version for, for April 21st, 2025, which is included in your packet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by the chair, second by Mr. Buskirk. Discussion, which I think would then be why I would...
Explain the basis for the amendment, and then there'd be a vote on the motion to amend.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. So the items that were amended as a part of this update were that, there's an easement provided to public access to open space, and I'm gonna summarize instead of read line for line. The applicant or successor is set to establish a TIF agreements with the city and a new community authority. And it outlines a little bit of, of more detailed language about 2 mils to the property value. And then the purpose of that NCA will be to help with conservation funds, preservation of farmland, open space, flood plan, and other items. The other items within this is that council will now have final determination and approval over the final development plan. And then the final item is that the applicant is also included as a part of this documentation, what we're calling Exhibit C, which is articulating their intent in the development process of the property and then subsequent development projects in the future. Then I'm gonna roll call on...
On the motion to amend.
The motion to amend.
Can we ask a question before we do that, Mr. Chairman?
Discussion, yes.
Mr. Boggs, this attached development intent, Wilcox Community of Canal Winchester, Exhibit C, is that legally binding?
So that Exhibit C is not itself legally binding. It is placed as a commitment of the developer that they have, as I understand, discussed with other residents and shared with myself and others. But it is, the Exhibit C itself is not legally binding, in my opinion, which is why several of the aspects that called for city action or that required city participation are pulled out into the body of this ordinance. And those are legally binding.
Any way, I know this is, this is all happening very quickly because it keeps, it's all been a constant give and take between developer and the city. The, how do we know, how do we, not to impugn anyone's integrity because there's a great reputation that comes with the developer, but you know, five years down the road, things can change, anything can change. How do we make sure that we stick to this intent statement and it doesn't change as things can change?
Well, I think it is certainly relevant. If you were to, if something were to change in a material way from the zoning and preliminary plan that is in front of you this evening, if it were to pass, then they would have to come back to council, not only for the development plan, which is provided for in the body of this ordinance, but if there's a material change to that, to that text or to the plan, council has to approve that as well. So you have this, at least providing a record of what the developer is telling council at this time in an attempt to gather support from the community as well as to gather support of council. And so a future council could look to this to hold either this developer or a future developer or future property owner accountable to these statements. Can we take it to court and say that they have to follow that, those statements? No. But it is a, this is a political and legislative process, and so I would consider that statement of intent a political and legislative document.
Just kinda like the community plan, right?
Similar, yeah. It's guidance.
This one's cheaper than the community plan, but...
For the city.
I don't know how much it costs Mr. Hall.
Man, I have to speak for Mr. Wilcox.
Alright, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Boggs, this letter of intent, just to confirm, this was the one the developer and the residents helped put together after communication?
Yes, yes. And so it was provided...
Our residents.
Correct. At, at least one. I don't wanna speak about conversations that I was not directly a part of, but what's been conveyed to me is that this was a work in concert between the developer and at least one resident of the city of Canal Winchester, and then it was provided to us for comment.
So just to clarify, you're voting to amend?
This is, yes. This vote is just to approve the amended items that is in your packet this evening. This is...
Just to get the amended items in front of you by virtue of your council rules.
Are you looking for a second, Mr. Chairman?
I have a second. This is just discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, and, roll call?
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Thank you. Now I will move for adoption of ordinance 24-034. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bennett, second by Mr. Buskirk. Discussion?
Yes. I guess no matter how this vote goes, there's gonna be some happy people, there's gonna be some unhappy people. To, to think, if it goes yes, it goes no, to think that residents weren't listened to, in my opinion, is beyond crazy to think that. If that was the case, this would have been voted on two months ago, three months ago, the final third reading. This has gone back and forth to the table to, to, basically based on the residents' request and, and things that they need, wanted improved. So, once again, whether it's improved or not, council heard people.
Ma'am, you know, frankly, I am, uh... I'd like to applaud Wilcox and their team for the absolute Herculean effort they've made to try and make this a better project, more appropriate for our community. The commitments they've made, the willingness and pragmatism they've worked through this with. I have confidence if you do get this through, you're gonna build a good product. That being said, prior to y'all showing up here and asking to build this, I had, we were involved with some conversations, and Mr. Emmler, I'm glad you've got a contract on your property, and I, I wish you well. And unfortunately, we talked about no apartments when we met all those years ago, and we were pretty adamant about it. Yet here we sit, surrounded by apartments, and we're talking about building more apartments. And my challenge is, is we did the community plan, and very frankly, in that section of the community plan outlining what was to go out at that area, it was to have a standard of one dwelling unit per acre. The density of this particular proposed project is 4.5 units per acre. That is quite a switch from one unit to acre. So yes, if our residents feel like we pulled the bait and switch on them, we did. And I'm disappointed in staff for this even seeing the light of day because our community plan called for one dwelling unit per acre, and yet here we are, getting ready to probably vote on it. And that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just wanna say, um, thank you to so many of our residents who came forward either in the affirmative or in opposition to work with everybody involved who have expressed their reasons why they were for or against. So I wanna say thank you. I, I wanna say also, I was a girl that grew up off Hayes Road. I spent the better part of my life off Hayes Road. So I personally did not take this decision lightly. So I hope that I listen to everybody pro and against, and I just wanted to say thank you for your community involvement.
I guess I wanna echo what Ms. Amick said and also what Rick Moore said. I don't think it's debatable that we did or didn't listen to the residents. I know me personally, whether it's in council chambers, in public, or just on online forums, digested all of the comments pro and against what the, what the public's asking for. I want to commend, and I wanna, for, Wilcox, for their willingness to work with our residents and what their residents were asking, our residents have been asking for, to try to get things that closely resemble exactly what the community plan's saying, although it does not match, and there is some things that, you know, is left to be desired by some of our residents. I think a lot of our residents are happy from what I'm talking about with what has been proposed. I wanna thank Stacy Boma's leading the, the, the final charge to help in the negotiations to, to modify that plan. With that being said too, I, I did grow up in Canal Winchester. I've lived here for about the entirety of my 31 years of life. And I do not take lightly that I am elected to represent the desires of the residents, but they also entrusted me with having foresight of what's coming. And development doesn't happen in a vacuum. It's happening all around us, not just in Canal Winchester. And having control of that process through working with partners, our community developer partners, that are willing to match what we're asking for is, is vital. And I, I think that's what we got here, and I really, again, I appreciate Wilcox, I appreciate the staff, and I appreciate all the residents for coming out and constantly making it known what they, they feel about this project.
I'll go next. I'll echo the same comments. I do appreciate Wilcox being able to work with our community, but also appreciate the residents coming forward, both pro and against the, you know, development. You are heard, both sides. I just wanna remind all the residents that we have these meetings biweekly. I would love to see your faces at all of our meetings and share input. This is probably one of the ones that I've actually had the most communications with our residents and input from our residents on. So I do greatly appreciate all of you attending tonight. I do wanna say thank you to our staff. I think we've got a top-notch staff. I really appreciate the effort that you've put into reviewing these plans as well, not just once, but many, many times, to make sure that it fits the, the needs of our community. So, thank you.
Who wants to bow? You wanna go, or you want me to?
No, I'll go.
Okay.
I do thank everybody for coming here. This is never an easy process. We hear from residents, not only the ones that are passionate, that show up to all the meetings and express their opinions, but the ones that meet us out for dinner, or that fight our porches, or call us. There's been a lot of people for this development and against it, and we are listening to everybody. There's not a right decision for both sides. I'm not gonna get a middle ground. The, along this process, we have been accused of taking bribes. We have been accused of buddying up with developers. That's not how any of the seven people on this committee, on this board run. We take everything that's presented to us. We have lots of conversations amongst our, our fellow council members, amongst city staff, amongst developers, among our residents. There's so much that goes into it. And it's, you, you sit up here, and I would, I would encourage any of you who want to do this, please, sign up. My seat is open after the end of the year. But please know, this is not an easy decision. We do listen to everybody. There isn't this great magical thing that's gonna make everybody happy. Some of my fellow council members can attest to the fact that I will literally sit at the table and listen to both sides. I have been accused of listening and, and engaging with the enemy when people didn't wanna build development. And yet I listened, and you try to find a middle ground. So I hope as we cast our vote, and I know some of you say, it'll, it'll, it'll hurt your election. We don't vote based on our election, and we should not be voting for our personal feelings. All of our personal feelings are set aside because there's things that I would never have wanted in my backyard. I didn't want bees. I didn't get bees.
Chickens?
Chickens. Along the years, we make a lot of decisions. They're not easy. But we make them for what we feel is best for our community based on what is occurring around us or our conversations with Columbus, or our conversations with other cities, and our conversations with the residents. They're not easy. But I thank all of you for being here, for stopping us along the way, for calling us, for texting us, for, you know, Stacy, I think I've cornered you in so many... Of course Stacy's getting picked on tonight. But I've relied on some of her experience to have additional conversations, to have a better understanding of what's best and understand things that we don't know. My background is education. It's not development. So asking questions of people who know about this is imperative. Having conversations with the city of Columbus... Having conversations with the city of Columbus, there was a huge plan, right next to, I know, I'll hurry up.
I gotta, I'm on, I'm gonna get to work.
Right next to Jeff Wyler. There was this big plan. Columbus had a huge plan, they were never going to develop industrial, ever. I met with Columbus in person numerous times, I met with them on the phone, I had conversations with them. They were never going to build industrial, they had a planned development. And then what did they do? They built industrial buildings, they built another gas station. Why were they promised everybody they wouldn't? We have to be prepared for that, too, and prepare ourselves, protect our boundaries, protect ourselves. So I appreciate everybody saying what they said and sharing with us. And again, I hope that as you're sitting there, and you're passionate about it, please, please, take a petition and start getting signatures. I would be happy to sign for any of you.
To run for council?
To run for council.
Okay.
I actually...
My seat's open in December.
Alright. Thank you. Thank all of you, and really, all of the people have shown up, all the people have come out. The, let's, the ordinance number here is ordinance 24-034. So this came through last year. We paused almost five months to listen, hear community feedback. The Wilcox family also paused, at probably their own financial detriment at this point, to make sure they were a good community partner. They've listened to residents, they've worked closely with residents, they've tried to figure out how we can make things work. I hear that, you know, listen, I was part of the development for the community plan. I don't know, and I will agree to disagree on the sort of bait and switch part of that. Does it say one acre lot? Yes. It says a lot of other things, too. You know, go through the values. You know, we value a community that's ecological and fiscally responsible. I would argue this development is very fiscally responsible for the city. It's gonna help fund future infrastructure projects. It's going to limit the amount of infrastructure that the city has to maintain. So, the fee simple lot development, the townhome part, the apartment part, that'll all be managed by a private group, it won't be managed by cities. So city tax dollars aren't committed to managing that infrastructure in the long term. That seems like that would meet with our charge to be fiscally responsible. It is also, you know, preserving our past while planning for our future. The Wilcox family has agreed that they're gonna work to create an NCA that's gonna help us do that. This is the first of its sort of kind, potentially replicated by other cities in the future who are gonna try and do similar things. We also talk about the well-being of our neighbors. This development will have, and I'm guessing, correct me if I'm wrong, three miles of walking trails, maybe more? That's gonna help promote, you know, health and well-being. Now, I can't make you go walk those trails, but get a dog, go walk the trails, 10,000 steps a day really helps your overall health and well-being. Community character and design, objective number two. It mentions focusing on developing housing that will target the missing middle. That is sort of the intent of the townhome project. We don't get a lot of development these days, start fresh, from the ground up. I think that's why city viewed this as an opportunity to try and address the missing middle. It's objective number two under urban character and design. So, you know, while one acre isn't being met, we've got 40%, open space. The schools on Monday voted to accept $250,000 as part of what the city has as an ordinance, that either you set aside so much land for the schools, or you make cash payment in lieu of. Well, the schools opted for the payment in lieu of. Mr. Roberts, the school treasurer, says that total new revenue for the schools will be somewhere north of $2.6 million, and, you know, estimates about 100 students. It also says birth rates are down, enrollment's down, overall impact on the schools will be very limited. In his words, not mine. So, we do a lot of work to try and make sure we are, Mr. Wilson, you aren't the only one having sleepless nights. I've had many sleepless nights. We take this very seriously, and for the community to kind of assume that they're not heard, it is, it hurts my soul, honestly, because we do a lot of work to try and hear. We've brought back Council Connects, we've brought back all of these opportunities. You know how many people show up at Council Connects? 10, 12? We create opportunities to listen, get five at the last one. We do our best to make ourselves available and try and make sure that we are doing what we feel is in the best interest of the community. And no one is out to do harm. And like Ms. Amos said, this vote tonight is not about a reelection platform, it is with what we believe to be in the future best interest of the city and all of our residents. Because you talk about traffic, and traffic's coming, if we do nothing, nothing changes. So your traffic's coming from all sides. To believe that andro is not gonna have an impact on your traffic, it will. Do you want nothing happening? Or do you want some action? And I get that, you know, gender road used to be a two-lane road. Yeah, Pfeiffer wasn't there either. So, you know, we can't sit aside and say, one side of the city we're gonna protect while we're gonna develop all the other sides. I look at, it's gotta be a whole picture. You've gotta take the whole, the whole thing. So, with that, I think we've probably said all we can say this evening, and again, I appreciate every member of council expressing their thoughts and viewpoints on this. I know this is very personal for a lot of us. I will, roll call.
And thank you, Mr. Pezner.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Did I not motion?
There was a motion.
Okay. Motion by the chair, second by Mr. Busker. It was so long ago, we all forgot. It's okay. Alright.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McGoughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
No.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Thank you. The next ordinance on for third reading this evening is ordinance 25-005.
An ordinance amending section 161.03, competitive bidding and notice requirements of the Godified Ordinances of the City of Canal Winchester, Ohio.
Ms. Amick is sponsored. Sorry, I blacked out.
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 25-005.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Amick, second by Ms. Amos. Roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McGoughlin?
Yes.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, there are no items for second reading, so our next item is ordinance 25-008. This is, clerk, can you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to accept the dedication of real property, Shriming Gashi LLC, for use as public right of way.
Thank you. Ms. Amick is the sponsor for this.
First reading only.
Thank you. Next ordinance is ordinance 25-009. Clerk, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement for building Department Services with Architecture Ohio Incorporated for the provision of cheap building official and master plans examiner services.
Sponsor is Mr. Moore. First reading only. Thank you. That will bring us to council reports. First item is, we have public hearing Monday, May 5th, at 5:30, which will be followed by a work session at 6:00 on May 5th, and full council, I assume full council starts at 7:00. And then we'll have work session on May 19th, with work session beginning at 6:00, full council at 7:00. I do appreciate the addition of the Council Connect meeting dates that are included, outlining the opportunities to connect with your council members for the rest of the year. Note that May 21st is a Wednesday, we'll have, host that meeting, I believe, here in council chambers, from 6:30 to 7:30. We'll move to council reports, CW Human Services, and Mr. Shea.
Let's see here. We got the quarterly packet today, so there's a lot of info in there. One-way trips are up by 6%. Miles driven rose by 12%. City limit resident participation grew by 11%. Glad to hear that. They now have an Amazon flyer, Amazon wishlist flyer to support needs for ongoing programs. You can link to the webs, directly through their website or their Facebook page for easy access and sharing. And the community Easter egg hunt was a great success, we were fortunate to have beautiful weather, and the event brought out many families from across the community. A new addition this year, a food truck was a hit with attendees and added a fun twist to the day. There were no noise complaints that day, that's always a good thing. And a heartfelt thank you to city staff and volunteers who helped make this event run smoothly. Thank you, Mrs. Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Shea.
I would like to say that the Easter Bunny, although slightly awkward, did a fantastic job, a really, really great job.
Were you the bunny?
To the Easter Bunny.
Yeah. I heard it didn't maybe arrive as expected, as scheduled, but...
Shocking.
Still went off without a hitch.
Weird the Easter Bunny was late.
CWICC, Ms. Amick.
Thank you. I have nothing new to report. Our next meeting will be on April 30th at 11:30 a.m. here in council chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Amick. That'll bring us to CWJRD, Ms. Amos and Mr. Moore.
We did not have a meeting this month. I do some...
Yeah, it was, we didn't realize it was a religious holiday on Thursday, and our director is, had to be at church, so...
So we gave him the month off.
We gave him the month off. We did open up our esports, which was awesome, we already had several, like, four benefit kids actually signing up for that. And then soccer is rolling, what else do we have?
Football registration ends in 13 days.
And then cheerleading will open up.
I will throw, cry for help for the fifth and sixth grade team. They are already wait-listing children because of a lack of parent volunteers for coaching. So there is one full team already, and need some more volunteers for coaches to continue to...
Which program?
Fifth and sixth, football.
And then if there's anybody who loves cheerleading a whole bunch and wants to help commission cheerleading, like...
Emily Sorensen would love you. I bet Mrs. Clanthus knows some people that might...
She's like a state basketball coach.
No, she's a state champion coach.
Champion, a whole coach.
Anything else?
And she'll help you with the reading.
From the joint rec?
That's the biggest part.
No, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Destination Canal Winchester, Mr. Busker?
Thank you. I wanna say thank you to Karen Stiles and Mike Coleman for attending our meeting tonight. They did provide their first quarter financials that were in your packets at our last meeting. And then the events that we have coming up, we have Art on the Canal Stroll in historic downtown Canal Winchester, Saturday, May 17th, from noon to 6:00 p.m. Step Into the Arts, a large variety of artists of all types, live music, quilt show, Canal Winchester Student Art Exhibit, and amateur photography competition, and children's art area filled with activities and more. We have Summer Sundays at Stradale that starts on May 25th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is a great opportunity to relax with your family and friends, bring a picnic, and grab some drinks from your participating Dora locations. The band is yours for the taking, will be playing. If you enjoy country rock, you'll love this band, it's fun for the entire family. And the first summer farmer's market is Saturday, May 31st, from 9:00 to noon, at its new location in Stradale Park across from Shades on the Canal. And if you cannot remember any of those dates, you can always download the Canal Winchester app, and all those dates and more will be available to you.
There is an app for that. Yeah. I really wish he could allow us, like, a little back and forth.
He needs to get commissioned for the number of times we talk about the app. He just...
You'd think he gets paid by the download.
Yeah, they double my salary each time I mention it.
As a volunteer.
I still get nothing.
As a zero salary...
Ten times zero.
100,000 times zero.
I think you should ask for some exponents in there.
CW Chamber of Commerce, Mr. McGoughlin?
Yes, so, two events coming up to note. So we've got the State of the Schools Networking Lunch, and the annual State of the Schools Address. Superintendent Kaya Hunt will provide an update on the state of the district, including new and returning career pathways at Canal Winchester High School, and the district's master facilities plan. She will be joined by Career Readiness Coordinator Jasmine Stevenson, who will share more about CWHS's career readiness programs, including work-based learning and internship opportunities for students. Lunch will be provided, registration is still open, I believe it closes, I don't know if it's tonight or tomorrow, but if you're listening to this and you're interested in going, register now. Yeah, don't wait.
Christopher McGoughlin, maybe you could recommend getting, like, Lucas could use some help, like, approving housing, so maybe they could, that's a great career, it seems like they're in demand.
Yeah. I'll say something to Ms. Stevenson about it.
Just, you know, maybe they could shadow him.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. I appreciate the idea. Okay, so, the second event coming up in May, on May 16th, is the Chambers Golf Outing. We're bringing it back this year. We're still open to sponsors, so if you're a local business that would like to sponsor the event, I wish Wilcox was still here, so we could just kinda give them the eye, but any sponsors that we can get for the event would be great, and anybody that would like to register for the event to golf would be great as well. Mike Coleman, I'm looking at you. I know you know how to swing a club, so if you haven't registered and you'd like to play, please register online at thecanalwinchester.com, the Chambers website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGoughlin. Any items for older new business this evening?
Question to return.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Busker. Any discussion? Alright, roll call.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McGoughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, thank you. Timeout 8:05.